Oh, I bet you can't because Lisa, can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? But we can't hear you. Might as well just keep that trend going, huh?
Should I go ahead and start?
Yes.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. It is 6:31 with Roll Cal. Marg here. Becky is here. Dave O'Connell.
Here.
Austin.
Here.
Marv.
Yep.
Mark is absent. And our new board member will be seated at our January special meeting. With that, please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
1.4 approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Remove.
And then Marg, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 2.1 recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Lake Park Audubon schools welcome you to the meeting of the LPA Board of Education. While this is a meeting of the board to conduct the business of the school district, the board is not statutorily compelled to hear comments. We also desire to provide an opportunity to hear from members of the public, including staff and students on matters of interest. This portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of not more than 30 minutes unless otherwise determined by the board. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to not more than three minutes. The board requests that all comments be in keeping with and contribute to an atmosphere of civil, courteous, thoughtful, and respectful public discourse. Board members and administration will not respond to comments at the meeting. Appropriate responses will be provided at a later time. Our comments may lead to future board agenda items. Thank you for attending, and I believe we have one speaker tonight.
Yes ma'am. Wally Miller. Bobby, about 16 year old that goes to LPA. I'm concealed carry person. My wife and I both are concealed carry persons. Carry everywhere we go, except for court hours at school. Hand it out, a sheet, a little known Minnesota exemption that allows guns in school. Any of you knew Greg Love from Twin Valley? He carries every day at Twin Valley School. Because superintendent's given a writ letter that I sent to the county attorney at school. I think for the safety of our kids, we should have teachers, staff, that are willing to be trained, be allowed to carry in school as protection of our children. How long does it take for the sheriff to get the Lake Park out of the school district? If there is an incident in the school? 15, 20 minutes? Somebody in the schools was armed, concealed? Nobody would know other than the principal or superintendent. Or whatever. Be a good idea. The statute, Minnesota statute number 609. 609 dot 66 has item eight. And I didn't get enough copies of this from my printer. It's possession on school property. And under article F, number eight, it says possession of dangerous weapons, BB guns or replica firearms, with written permission of the principal or other person having general control and supervision of the school or the director of the childcare center. So with the permission of somebody on this board or a principal or superintendent staff to carry it in the school. So I'm asking that look at this for the protection of our children. Too late if somebody comes into the school and you know it's getting closer and closer every day. Too late if somebody comes into the school and starts shooting over the place. Okay.
Thank you, Wally, for bringing that to our attention. Any other comments? Does not look like anybody is here. We'll move on to 4.1, elementary principal, Mr. Barr.
Yes, we have some music groups. When we get back from break here, four different staff are represented for the building design. Sandy Saefold in General Education ended a survey of the general education staff. Justin will do special education. Lori Wixler represents specialists. Will work the student council in to get student feedback on the design as well. Adam Simon will represent maintenance and brace up for early childhood and many recruits. But different voices in there, but each kind of been tasked to go out within their departments and gain feedback for that design. We had our music programs. We had virtual options, but many chose to attend in person. I think I've been really excited to get back in the, in the building and in the gym. So that was nice to host first through sixth grade kindergarten preschool. And then Mr. Eckland did a fifth grade band demonstration to keep it kind of 20, 30 minutes before the basketball game. And that was great to see the progress all students made as well. And we talked about doing career exploration at the elementary this year and partnering different grade levels with different traits or career options pathways. COVID-19 has put a little bit of context on that. So the goal is to create a partnership. Some, like East Central Health, has agreed to partner with our fourth grade. And we wanted to wait until the new year to see if they would do it virtually or onsite. And mainly just asking them to to do, come and present to our students either virtually or onsite once, and then us to go and see in person. So BTD has came twice onsite, has had to cancel our two visits to BTD due to outbreaks at their facilities, but we still have a third one planned onsite and at BTD for the spring. Craig Nelson partnered with second grade and Beth and Holly planned as well. Nice to be in a small school where he called it about 12:30 and by 1:15, we had 62 graders out in the cornfield next to Team Industries. And they had a couple combines and other tractors out there. So every kid got to ride a lap in the field. And we cut it close at the end. So also nice with a small district. We just called the bus driver and got picked up on the side of the road. And just memories for kids and thanks to the Nelson Farms for that partnership. Team Industries has agreed to partner with the third grade, and we're setting up dates for that one as well. MinDOT, it'll likely be virtual, but they're going to partner with our fifth grade. And they'll get to see all the different departments that the Minnesota transportation houses out of Detroit Lakes. And then some yet to be set up. First grade, we're looking at Restaurant, SJE kindergarten with a trades. And then preschool with cities and towns. That's just kind of updated where current things are at. Some are a little farther along than others. Carry on some winter traditions of hosting, well, we planned to host a movie, but then with the e-learning last week, weren't able to do that, but had that planned. We did Saturday with Santa. Early childhood hosted that on Saturday in December, and that went well. And then had our whole bingo with students as well. And then just a staffing update. Adam Simon has agreed to the position of director of elementary maintenance and facilities. Hired a evening custodian for your approval, PJ Travis. And then a wind teacher started against the 14th, Wednesday in January. Amy Hunstead, who comes with 13 years of teaching experience in a multiple different grade levels. So just looking to fill out. Any questions then?
Have you tried, I think Papa Murphy's and Dairy Queen both do the restaurant things with.
Singing and then the lines, the Roadhouse too, with them having Parker and Jet here in District 3.
Sure. Any questions for Mr. Barr? Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our business manager, Lisa's online, correct?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? We can. Awesome. I think that headset is going to the garbage. Okay. Dr. Godfrey, did you want to bring up the the attachment?
Yep, I have it up now.
Okay. I'm not seeing it, but.
It's not on the projector.
Okay, so the first the first page would be the reconciliation for the bank for November. Then we'd have the regular checking account statement. And then after that, it would be the the MSDLF statement. Then after that, we'd have the monthly board expense report. And this would be for November. And that's three pages long. And then the monthly board revenue report. And that is two pages long. And then the board report for November 22nd, 2021. That shows the cash balance on the general ledger of 4.3 million. 4.4 million. Year over year, the district cash position has increased by 1 million. And over the previous month, that's decreased by a half a million. And we have the budget to actual as of 12/21. And then we have the budget to actual fiscal year to date through November of 2021 versus fiscal year to date, November of 2020. Made a couple notes here. I have drawn down or requested drawdown of $111,000 of COVID-related grants on December 21st. So those numbers are not yet reflected in this report. The expenses, however, are present in the expense figures. And the COVID-related grant revenues and expenses were not contemplated in the budget. Letter B, the November fiscal year to date of fiscal 2021. Revenues were down due to lower meal counts due to COVID. Last year, at this time, the receipts for the food service were down. And then the other note I just put is just highlighting again how the community service revenues are not meeting the expenses as has been pretty common in the past. And then the next page.
What page are you on, if you don't mind me interrupting?
Well, I'm on the page that says Lake Park Audubon Public Schools ISD 2889. Bills, salaries, benefits, and EBE. So I had just gone over the page that's kind of, it's kind of a summary of the board report for December.
I think I found it here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. What I went over. And then the next page, just the bills and payroll by fund for the time period from the last board meeting to this board meeting. And then the total cash dispersed was $765,000 in that time period. The rest of the reports are pretty detailed as far as, you know, a listing of checks and wires. And then even more detail on each check and wire. So at this point, that's, that's what I have. Does anyone have any questions? I have a question, I think, or maybe it was just the way you worded it. So you said we were down a half a million in the last month? Yes. Is that normal? You know, I think it was the same situation last year. Let me look here. Let me, I'll pull up this report from December of last year, but I think it was similar. Because I did look at that when I saw that situation. Board report. Just looking here real quick. Well, I guess I stand corrected. We weren't tracking that last year. Look at the report again here. Actually, what I did look at, okay. It's kind of hard to point this out because I can't see what page you guys are looking at. If you go back to the board report for December 22nd, it starts, the top of it says cash position and then budget to actual. And then there's a budget to actual comparison. If you look under the budget to actual comparison fiscal year to date, you see the actual revenue is 2.4 and the expenses are 2.8. If you look at the prior year, you see the same type of range there where the revenue is 2.3, but the expenses are 2.7. That's what I looked at when I saw that we were, the cash position had decreased by half a million. That I would guess that in the previous year, it was the same type of situation because you have the similar spread between the revenue and expenses for the month. So I guess at this point, I wouldn't be too alarmed. Does that make sense? Does anyone have any other questions? Did I lose you? Hello?
I believe I'm allowed to do that.
Except the VFH.
Okay.
I'll look the other way if you want to do it though.
So let's get rid of this.
Casey told me to do it.
Okay, should be good, right?
Yep.
It did not share. So I'm gonna try that one more time.
One person.
It's still not showing it. I can't stop screen share.
Go into the settings.
What's that? Yeah. So. Two today. They're not financing, that's why. Usually it's around 599 is kind of the average. Yeah, a lot of people don't realize you get
Share tab or share.
The fun stuff. We're talking the interest rates will go up three times next year. So if you want to find.
Are we good?
We're good.
Having some technical difficulties tonight, it sounds like. So Lisa, if you can hear us, it sounds like we're good on our end. Secondary principal report, we did not have one from Mr. Meyer this month. Superintendent report.
So I'm gonna pull that up real quick. Hold on a second. Lakes Country Service Co-op, they're working on bidding out for health insurance again. They are actually working with Medica. They're going to have a proposal for all schools within the co-op to look at. Should we, we're not in the cycle to bid out our health insurance yet. I talked with Sean about this. I believe we're in year two of a three year. So when the time comes, it's just to give us an idea. I'd like to set a date for school board training. We can bring in Dr. Shots. We had talked about this previously, but just cannot find a convenient time for everyone. If is anybody opposed to a Saturday meeting? We could do it around lunch. I think maybe a two hour meeting, lunch, you'd have lunch provided. Do it at the school this time.
I work till 3:00 on Saturdays.
Okay.
I don't know if it's possible to do at the 3:30, 5:00 or something.
Like do whatever time we can make it. I know that. Okay. And Becky, I know you're gonna be getting pretty busy here pretty soon.
Yeah, but I know that the 22nd will not work.
Okay.
Of January.
Is that the only one?
And then the 15th, we're supposed to be done.
Okay. Yeah.
MSBA.
Okay. How about I, can I shoot some dates out? And you guys let me know. Well, you guys promised you'll read your emails and reply to them. I could sit out, I could sit out like a Google form where you guys could select a couple of dates.
I think I'm good.
Okay, Saturdays, I think work great for something like this. So if we could look at that, but I'll let you guys know. Truth and taxation report has been completed. It was sent to the state tax office. And final levy certification was completed and sent to Becker County and MBE. Best workforce was completed, thanks to Mr. Meyer and Mr. Barr, working with their teams. Talked about the building project update. You guys are gonna look at the actual items. We're gonna talk about some spending limits, our approval limits. The project oversight committee is made up of Becky, Marg, Craig Art, and myself. We met with ICS and the GLG teams. Just a brief overview of the design process. There'll be more to come on that. I think when we start looking at our monthly work sessions, we'll get more in depth in that. SR3 application budget has been approved, so the Promethean active boards have been ordered. They're gonna take a while to get in. So John is working with them. I'm thinking we're probably looking at a summer install because it's gonna be quite lengthy. They'll, we were paying for them to install. They're pretty quick about it, but still, that's 40 some boards. It's gonna take a while. And then Lakes Country Service Co-op Board of Election, Board of Directors election, I guess gave you that. I have one more thing that's not on here. I received something from MSBA. Says enclosed, you'll find a certificate of training honoring Becky Mitchell for completing the MSBA Leadership Development Program, which has been accomplished by Becky successfully attending the Leadership Workshop Series, Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4. So congratulations, Becky. That wasn't an easy task. I went through all four of them and some of them sitting through that was not easy. These shirts that you guys have. We did a, it's kind of like a team building activity with our team building activity slash Christmas send away for our our staff. We've got shirts for everybody. Support staff, teaching staff, everyone received one. So yeah, we're pretty happy to be able to do that from time to time. If you guys want to take a look, I do have some attachments in there for you. These deal with our bond sale. This is the pre-sale reports coming up. There's the owner's contract, which Becky and I both signed with ICS. There's just a few things in there. I'm sure you guys have a lot of time on your hands to sit down and read through this and enjoy it. If you have any questions, let us know. We'll find the right person to answer those for you. But it's just trying to keep you up to date where we are in the process right now.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Godfrey? Thank you. Technology Director update. John is not here, but there was a report sent out. Is there any questions on that, that perhaps Dr. Godfrey or Casey can answer?
Just to give you a few updates, we did redo the door security systems. In the high school, we went from the small fobs that go on your keyring to cards. We're going to actually, the exterior door that comes in the breezeway of the high school is key-carded right now. We're gonna actually do the next entrance as well. So it'd be double protection. And then the back door that comes in the office that's supposed to stay locked, at times doesn't. So that will be key-carded as well. So you'll have three, three points of security for the office, which in an issue, if we had an active shooter, is incident command at any rate. So that should be a protected area to call, you know, the different orders and directives and to communicate with law enforcement. It's also rekeyed, I think, almost all cylinders in all the doors at the high school too. So that was all part of our SR2 grant that he's completed. And we're gonna wait and do the same over here, but it'll be done at the elementary school after we move through construction.
Any technology related questions? Thank you. Food service director, does not look like we have a report this month. Same with activities director. That moves us into five, which is the consent agenda. Consider approval of a payment of the ISD 2889 bills, claims, and the district financial report. Consider approval of minutes. Consider approval of treasuries report and resignations and retirement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Marv. Do we have a second? Second by Austin. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number six, recognitions. 6.1 Carmont Lake Sportsman's Club, $5,000 for the deportation trip. Will that happen this year, Craig?
On the current plan, yeah. Last year they were closed down, but as of last week, they were open. And then the $5,000 allows no cost to students. Aren't always able to do that, so it's great that they're able to make that.
6.2 Carmont Lions Club, $1,000 for robotics. Freddy group, palette of Santa wipes. Did I say that right? Friday?
Yep, we received a huge palette of Santa wipes. And I don't think we were expecting that too, so it was a surprise.
Well, that's cool. 6.4 St. Francis Xavier Church, Christian women, $600 for student assistance. 6.5 Otter Tail Power Company, $100 for ECFE Santa Saturday. 6.6 Team Foundation, $11,068 for ECFE. 6.7 Lake Park Fire Department, $500 for ECFE Santa Saturday. My computer's a long way, hang on. 6.8 Community Alliance Church, 15 Thanksgiving meal baskets. 6.9 miscellaneous donations for $740 for the ECFE Santa Saturday. 6.10 St. Francis Xavier Church Walmart gift cards for families. 6.11 Carmont Lutheran Church, Lake Park Auxiliary Women, Orton's, City of Audubon, First Lutheran of Audubon, Maple Log Resort Bowling Team, and Anon, 4H, LPA Giving Tree. That was all for LPA Giving Tree support. 6.12 Pop Field Studios, $358 for elementary student activities. Form 6.13. Form six point one three, uh, Carmont Lutheran Church, five hundred dollars for elementary student activities. We thank all of those businesses and I'd like to do a little shout out to both team industries and the owners of. Pub, Brig and Carmont, uh, Pub for their donation of helping with. Uh, the. Operation, thank you for teachers and staff, they all donated items for that. Any other comments on those donations? Seven point one, approve and accept the Ida Bailey Audit. We heard about this last month, but we didn't actually approve it, it sounds like.
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
I moved.
Motion by Dave. Second by Marge, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point one contract approvals, was this for the EA?
This is for, um, well, there's several things in here for contract approvals. Um, we have our director approvals in here. Um, we have a new high school professional.
Do you want me to read those off?
Uh, no, I don't think you need to, they're all on there.
Okay. Uh, EA, we're not quite there yet, we're close.
Correct. Yep, we'll be hopefully soon.
Um. Do we have a motion to approve these contracts?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Marv, do we have a second? Second by Austin, any discussion? Those are right in your agenda for those of you that are. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eight point two, the valuations Northwest.
So from time to time, it's, uh, districts need to do what's called a valuation of their, uh, their fixed assets. Which will include everything from our laptops to our buildings, to our desks. For insurance purposes, it hasn't been done in a while. Um, I've worked with this organization several times, so if Sean brought to my attention that we need to update our insurance and we need to do a valuation. Of fixed assets, so I connect her with valuations Northwest and if you'll see in there. There is, uh, their terms are in there and their. Till it comes up, and their, their costs, which is pretty reasonable. What will happen is they'll come into the building, we have, they'll start off with inventories. So we have inventories for our shop, we have inventories for library, inventories for music and band, inventories for PE. And those individuals in those areas will complete those and they'll come in. They'll re-inventory everything and they'll tag it with a fixed asset tag and they'll number those. So we know every fixed asset the district has in its possession at the time. So if you look, go all the way to the bottom.
So are you proposing all of the different areas?
Yeah, uh, I think that would be in our best interest because that way we can share those with our. We can share those with our, um, insurance carrier and look at. Renegotiating our insurance, I think it's, it's time to do that.
So if you were unable to review those. Oh, yeah.
Should do it every five years is what's recommended.
Last time was done.
It's been.
Was it ever done?
It's been done, but it's been quite a while. So a lot of times what happens if, if you don't have a fixed asset inventory, you sit down with your insurance carrier and their representative and you'll just talk about, well, what do you have? And you'll kind of tell them, what do you have in the shop? And you'll, you'll tell them and they'll give you an estimate. So this will give us actual, actual, what is in our possession, which in terms, they can give us actual cost for replacements. Um, I did this. Tells us what we have.
Down the road with something about here where to go.
Exactly, so I'm glad you brought that point up. It's a good security measure, especially when we talk about technology. Because then we have a, e- even though John keeps a good inventory, we'll have a recorded inventory of every fixed asset. So if something comes up missing, we'll know it's missing rather than it just walked out the door and nobody ever knew it.
Opposed, if somebody is responsible for a specific area, then they can sign for those assets too, just to. Make sure that we keep them in the building.
Absolutely, and. I did this my last district and when we, we did this and presented it to our insurance carrier, we found out we were dramatically underinsured. It was the same thing, we sat down before, they talked about, well, what do you have? Like, we have this, this and that, okay, we should insure it for this. Once we looked at what we actually did have, um, as far as fixed assets, we found out we were underinsured by about a million dollars.
I could be wrong, but. Isn't that done at the end of the school year? I mean, we, I always have to write down every single thing I had, every paper clip.
You do a classroom inventory.
For higher, wasn't it?
Yeah, I'm sure, but this one I think is comprehensive for the whole thing.
Yeah, but I think it's like uniforms, you have to, I think everything is at the end of the school year. Doesn't someone?
Staff inventory.
Yeah, so typically when you check out the end of the school year as a teacher, you check out your classroom. So you inventory what you have in your classroom, your books. Um, furniture and then you turn in what needs to be, um, fixed. So basically use that as a way of seeing what needs to be replaced. So your principal will say, okay, we, we're missing this many texts out of this curriculum, we need to replace that. They aren't turned over for insurance though.
Well, it's similar.
It's similar, but it's a, it's accountability measure at the building level to. Like I said, do you need to replace text? Is there anything, do you have enough chairs and desks? Those are the things you inventory as a teacher. Turn that over to your principal and your principal keeps track of that to see what needs to be replaced.
So in, in essence, this is a compilation of all of that and more?
Yes, so this, this will be a inventory of everything. So they, they will actually come in the building at night. Um, and they will inventory everything, tables, desks, chairs, and they'll tag everything.
So the tool for us is what?
Uh, for construction valuation is the twenty five hundred. Um. So that would be on the high school. Uh, the equipment evaluation is what we're talking about, the fixed assets and then asset tagging. They'll, they'll create the asset tags that they're going to tag everything with. And, uh. And they do the labor on that and then they'll actually give us extra, should we purchase things down the road to continue in our inventory. And then their travel, I don't think that we need. The supplemental software package.
It's in high school, so is this only for the high school then?
So the construction valuation will only be for the high school. Right, but they'll still do all the fixed assets in this building, so, because all the tables and chairs and the equipment aren't going to leave.
So after, uh, everything's done at the elementary, would they come back and just do a construction one on the elementary?
We won't need that because that, we'll have that valuation done through the ICS. So we'll know the value of the property once it's constructed, you know, once the building's renovated. But then in about another five years, we'll have to do it again and look at both buildings.
I think it's a good investment because I've stared at enough burnt buildings that you never know what's in there when it's gone. So this is, uh, good for the, the school district to have good accountability of everything.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll motion.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
By Marv, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eight point three, resolution of the State High School League Foundation Grant. Do you want me to read this now or do you want to explain?
Yes, you can just, you can read it and then I'll explain it.
This is for Form A, resolution of governing board supporting Form A, application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation.
What it basically is, is a grant to help any students that can't afford activities fees. So it's. It's a good cause and hopefully get more people involved in activities. And that's a way of, uh, way to support them. But we have to do it through resolution.
And will you be applying for this or who applies for it?
Uh, the district's applying for it. So we'll have you sign that if the board approves, apply for this.
And resolution would be a roll call vote, correct?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion before we do a roll call vote? Any questions? Okay, uh, Marge? The roll call vote?
Yes.
Becky's yes, Dave?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Marv?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, eight point four, authorize the project oversight committee to make decisions.
So at our initial meeting, um, they want us to be able to make decisions and they'll do it in the board's interests. Now, some of, if there's like a huge change order, that will come back to the board and we'll discuss that a little bit more when we talk about spending decision limits. But it's giving the, the project oversight committee the authorization to make decisions if we need to use. This material as opposed to this material or any changes like that.
We have a motion?
I'll make a vote.
Motion by Marv. Second by Dave, is there any discussion or questions on that? I think Marge and I are very aware of the sensitivity of bringing back important items to the board as a whole, so.
I think that's great that we have that built in, um, work session every month now to work and update everyone.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, spending decision, decision limits for construction projects. So this is proposing to have the superintendent have the authorization of up to fifty thousand dollars. The, the POC, which you just approved, uh, fifty thousand to a hundred thousand and then the board would be anything over a hundred thousand.
This is by recommendation of both JLG and ICS, what they typically do.
Uh, does this stay in the confines of the, um. I can't think of the word. Contingency budget?
Yes, this isn't even, this isn't even. Broaching the contingency budget.
Okay, this is a little.
Yeah, it's just if, you know, it's just to make those decisions rather than having a board meeting, we talked about this before, rather than having a board meeting. Every time a decision needs to be made, you delegate that authority, but then anything over the hundred thousand limit comes back to the board for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Dave, do we have a second? Second by Austin, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, eight point six, approve combined polling places. So this is combining polling places, City of Audubon, uh, this combined polling place serves all territory and independent districts. Do you want me to read all this off? Have you all reviewed it? This is only if there's a special election, correct?
This is if there's a special election, so every December, by December thirty first, every school district must approve their combined polling places. Which we already got an email, where is it? And I said, well, we got away for a board meeting, but, um, so this would be the combined polling places and these are what we used.
City offices, correct?
Yes.
In both Audubon and Lake.
Yes. General election is precincts.
Where will this be posted for the public? Will it be on our website or is there an easy navigation spot for?
It'll be in board docs indefinitely. And then shall we have a special election, we'll make sure it gets posted and out to everyone. I mean, that's what we did last time as well.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Austin, do we have a second? Second by Marge, is there any discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. It's a roll call vote, oh, yep, it is, wasn't it?
Yes, it is.
Oh, I better read these then if it's, huh, if it's a resolution. I'll read the top part, resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designated hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for the school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election.
Yes.
Um, so. Do your motions and seconds still stand? Okay. Marge?
Yes.
Becky, yes, Dave?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Marv?
Yes.
Motion carries. Eight point seven, uh, twelve twenty three, regular day off.
So as you recall, um, because of the increase in student illness, we had a, up to a hundred and eighty students out. Uh, with flu like symptoms, um, we did have several that tested negative for COVID, but we did have some that tested positive for influenza. Um, we felt it was imperative to go to a, a distance learning day for that Wednesday and then have a regular day off. Consequently, I just read something that came from, uh, the state saying that many districts across the state had been giving extra days off for Christmas break. Just for teacher respite, if anything else. So I think this is kind of in keeping with that. So because that's a change in our calendar, I'd like the board to approve that if they feel. So obliged.
So moved.
Motion by Dave, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Austin, is there any discussion? How does this affect our total days?
It doesn't. I looked through our calendar and. We're pretty good, so.
My only comment on it, um, I'll, I'm in favor of it, but we just have to be careful how that's presented to the public. With board approval and what have you, because I know there was a little confusion with that.
Yep. I think our main thing was mitigating the further spread. What we were really concerned with, um, when I talked with, with Mr. Barr and Mr. Meyer about it is going away for the holidays, traveling. A lot of people going to see extended family and exposing them to the illness. And I can tell you, any given day, we had up to ten kids down the office, very ill, sending them home. So we wanted to stop that as fast as we could.
Was it on Tuesday? You had, there were a hundred and twenty four between the.
We had a, up to a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty.
Oh, what day was that?
That was, we talked about, it was Monday or Tuesday.
And Monday we're home.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike got sick right after breakfast.
So we look at COVID and what we would do in that situation. I actually talked with some of our, we, we had other superintendents in the area that did the same thing at school for the same reason. Um, we look at COVID, we have to do our mitigation procedures and go to distance learning at close school. I, I felt this is just as impactful to our public.
Right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eight point eight superintendent's contract. Dave, do you want to take it or do you want me to take it?
Well, the contract's attached there, we met with, uh, Dr. Godfrey the other day and worked through the details. It's a three year contract with a two percent increase over the three years. I think the biggest thing we talked about was medical coverage and, uh, nothing out of the ordinary, so. If you had a chance to review it. Any questions on the contract?
He's willing to put up with us then for another.
He, he seems so.
We'll go further than that when the time comes.
No, it went very well, I mean, I thought both sides had a little given tape there, so.
Uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Marv, do we have a second? Second by Marge, is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And with that, our succeeding meetings, nine point one will be this button that will now be a special, uh, school board meeting on January tenth at five o'clock at LPA High School. And then our regular board meeting on January twenty fourth at six thirty again at the high school.
Before we adjourn, I think our transportation director did have something to say. Do you have something you wanted to mention to the board?
Tough, it's going to be a tough year again. You all know we're three bus drivers short for paying full under, short fifty dollars. I personally as a bus driver want to thank you for the five dollars. An hour increase that we got. That's probably going to help us. You know, it's a bus driver. I was thinking if we could, it's a sign on bonus, but I think that was mentioned before by Julie.
Mr. Mueller and I had discussed that a little earlier and I, I actually think it's a good idea and I'd like to bring it forward at the January meeting. Many districts do that. They do attract bus drivers that way. So I think that's something we can discuss and see what will work best.
It loses three bus drivers and, and. One retired Kent retired, Bonnie went on to a much better position, she got Anderson. Sixty thousand dollars a year. And she's willing to come back and help me here on weekends. I think if we have a decent sign on bonus, I'm saying, well, I'll, I'll. And you look at what we pay in full under. Nice, we could get three more. They want, Nate wants, wants us to. Tell him by March, he's not going to need him for next year. I don't know how we're going to find bus drivers to replace the three.
And I spoke with him as well and I. And I spoke with him as well and I told him that would be the earliest. And I said, I can't give them a guarantee that we'll be ready to make a decision at that time either, which my thoughts are we will not. We can do recruiting throughout the summer, late spring and summer when we're closer to the start dates. And we can get people in, get them trained on routes, get them trained on the area. And I'll work with Mr. Mueller for that as well. But my guess is we're going to probably have to ride this out as long as possible to ensure that we've given every opportunity we could to hire new bus drivers. I, I think it's, goes without saying, we would like to have our own fleet and our own drivers driving that fleet.
But I'm not saying, you know, come up with a sign-on bonus, but you don't give that to them.
What about referrals?
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that too. So referral bonus?
We're like, yeah, if you were going to do a sign-on, maybe say if a driver recruits another driver after the year's done, it will get something.
Yeah. We'll have to vet bonuses through our, our legal counsel just to find out how we do that. But I know many places do that. So I think that's a good idea too.
You have many part-time drivers I would consider? Full-time or?
No. Perry Nelson has, has done his tests and he's going to give his school bus license, but he only wants to drive the extra trip.
I met one of my neighbors. She had a lot of good things to say about you. Apparently she's a, like a temporary fill-in driver for us. Gosh, I can't remember her name, but she lives right over by the storage units by Big Carmont there.
Yeah, was that?
I, I don't remember her name, but she just said she's a temporary like fill-in for us. And they moved here from cities and just wanted to help out the school.
Anthony Francis is filling in. He's doing some, actually he's out on the mini bus today for wrestling. One of the wrestling companies. So he's, he's filling in. He's also done some extra for me. I retired.
Have we tried, and maybe you have, and I just haven't seen, have we tried advertising like on Facebook and LinkedIn and all those?
Every, every place and all the major newspapers within a probably a 50 to 75 mile radius.
Julie, Julie had a lot of advertising.
We've made quite a few changes though in the last couple of months with the ability to split some routes and, or the option to and option.
Did I talk to you or Wally about putting it out there where maybe you only want to do the morning or the afternoon? Because that's a big commitment for a birthday.
And we did a big newspaper ad campaign with that in there.
Didn't put that in?
Yep, that. We talked about that. We talked about the, the increase in price. We talked about training.
Time benefits, training, yeah.
We put it.
Another thing I want to ask you, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon is not enough. You come into the bus garage in the morning, you have to be there half an hour ahead of schedule, see, do your 15 minute pre-trip. That's something as wrong as your bus. You're going to either pre-trip another bus or, or, or repair what you have, light bulb out or whatever. We're not getting paid for fueling. Some of us fuel twice a week, 15 to 20 minutes at the end of the day or under their fuel. So I would, would ask you to consider upping to two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, to three hours.
One thing we are, we're in the works, we need to get internet out to the bus barn. And once we do, we're going to have the clock system. Bus drivers can actually clock. And once they get to the bus barn, until they get done with route and they put their bus up, and then again, when they come in the evening. So we'll clock actual hours that way too.
Yeah, they should be paid for what they're.
Absolutely.
For what they're doing, I don't think they should just be limited to, you all just put it more than that.
And I don't know where that came about. We talked about a guaranteed four hours. A guaranteed four hours means that's the minimum you're going to get. They should be paid for the time that they hit the bus barn.
Yes.
After they drank coffee until they start. And then when they put it back in and they shut the door, they clock out. So once we get that system in place, it'll clock actual hours and that'll help quite a bit. But I think we'll put that on the agenda again, Wally, for January meeting to discuss that and have board approval. Increase from four hours guaranteed to five hours guaranteed because you're right, just the check write takes a lot of time.
Okay, any other, anything for the good of the order? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Austin?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a happy new year, everybody.